Hi and welcome to Vote 2018 Board of Education Candidates. I'm Sandy Jacobson, your moderator for this forum. Election Day is almost here and this forum will give you an excellent opportunity to size up the candidates for four open seats on the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Education. The individuals you elect will serve four-year terms of office beginning in December 2018. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund, working in partnership with Santa Monica City TV. The League is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that never supports nor opposes candidates for public office. During this forum, you will be hearing from four of the five candidates who are running for four open seats on the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Education. Candidate Richard Tavildarren Jaswein had a conflict in scheduling and could not take part in this forum. He sends his regrets. Before starting, we wish to thank community members who took the time to send in their thoughtful and important questions for this forum. We will now turn to our Board of Education candidates. In alphabetical order, they are Oscar De La Torre, Craig Foster, Lori Lieberman, and Thana Walla. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to answer a variety of questions with a maximum of one minute for each response. Questions during tonight's forum will be asked of the candidates in random order according to a blind matrix created by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund. To conclude the forum, each candidate will be given 60 seconds to comment, rebut, augment, or clarify any topic raised during the forum. Okay, so let's turn to our first round. For this round, I will be asking a series of questions that will be answered by all four candidates. First question. Parent and family involvement is one of the eight priority areas that must be included in the Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. It is also an important part of the district's Title I work. How would you, as a school board member, work to enhance the district's current efforts to engage parents and families, particularly those who were not historically involved and are still underrepresented? And let's start out with Ann.
Hello. So the topic is parent engagement and how would I engage parents as a school board member, especially those who are not always associated with the school? And in order to do that, we need to define which parent groups are not associating with the district and we need to really engage them in a manner that speaks to them and their culture, their work habits, their needs. And then we really need to make sure that we're giving them all of the tools in order to facilitate their ability to express what they need for their kids and how we can help them through our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Craig, please.
That's a great question because it highlights that a lot of what education is about comes from outside the school day. And we can do so much in the schools, but when the kids get home, it's really important that all of the community, the city, the school district, work with the parents, the families, the children at home to give them the supports they need. So we've just hired a new head of parent engagement. It is one of our eight priorities. There's a lot of different ways we interact with parents and the caregivers. We have School Smarts, a program to help people, parents, understand how to interact with the community unless you're on the inside. You may not know about PTA. You may not know about school board meetings. You may not know how to represent your truth to the school board. And at the same time, we want to reach out into the community to get people to come into the schools and work together to get the best opportunity for a 24-hour wraparound for the education we're giving the kids into their school life and their home life.
Thank you, Craig. Lori, please.
Craig stole a few of my lines. No, and I don't disagree with either of what Ann and Craig have said. Since the school district has recently hired a person to coordinate family engagement, and this is a position we've never had before, we are really looking forward to hearing from a person who has done this before, what the plan will really look like, how we can fit into it as school board members. They may want to have us involved with parents, and I would relish that opportunity. The board will have periodic presentations on the progress and on what's working and what's not, and maybe what schools are participating more heavily. As Ann said, there are schools and parts of our district where the parent engagement level is something we really need to work on because it's all about supporting their students and helping them succeed.
Thank you, Lori. Oscar, please.
Well, parents are the first teachers, and so we're very fortunate in our school district to have a lot of parents involved in our PTSAs, and they do great work. One of the things that we know is that the PTSA doesn't fit for all parents. And so we're very proud of hiring our new parent engagement coordinator. We're looking forward to implementing our parent engagement framework, which includes not just parent engagement but community engagement as well. I'm also very proud that the school board approved a new parent group called Latino Pima, Padres, Estudiantes, Maestros Association. And this group is intended to increase Latino parent engagement in our school district. We have the English Language Advisory Committees, which is intended to work with those parents who don't speak English, but we're looking to expand Latino parent engagement, and we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Oscar. So school finance reforms have helped districts lift student outcomes, but large achievement gaps still persist by race, ethnicity, income, and English learner, EL, status. Our school district is not excluded from that assessment. The recently released Getting Down to Facts II study concludes that California's public school system needs a continued focus on closing achievement gaps through multiple approaches, including enhanced early childhood education. So here's the question. Hearing that, if the school bond on this November's ballot, that's measure SMS, passes, would you, as an elected school board member, work to ensure that early childhood education facilities can be approved and prioritized in the district's facility plans? So Craig, will you lead us off with that?
Sure. I mean, I think that commingles two different things. The P-12, we've redefined ourselves as a P-12 school district, that early childhood education is absolutely fundamental to closing the achievement gap. We've created a new series of schools that are Reggio-inspired, that are just beautiful. We have Dr. Susan Samardz Powell, who is the new head of that, and she and her team are doing amazing work. So we are absolutely committed to the idea that the sooner we can get kids into a formal education center and the sooner we can begin closing the achievement gap. In terms of school facilities, the decision on how we spend that money is a function of what facilities are most in need of repair, what facilities are most in need of support, and whether or not that's going to be the preschool facilities is a question of what exists and what are the higher needs for the school district. So I think it's highly likely that there will be money from the bonds spent, but that'll be a priority decision.
Thank you, Craig. Lori, please.
I am one of the two board liaisons to the Early Childhood District Advisory Committee, so I'm probably more familiar with their work and with the status of the preschools just by virtue of that position. As Craig has pointed out, we have worked hard to improve the quality of our preschool education that we're offering, adopting a Reggio-based approach. But this has not extended completely to all the schools. And while we have three new preschools, we have several other preschools that are old that need to be refurbished, that need to be brought up to the standards that would really help us provide the services that are now being provided and the education at the newer schools. How that ties back into the achievement gap is, of course, the data that shows that early preschool, high-quality preschool experiences help children as they begin and as they continue in K-12. So I would be a supporter of that because I think it addresses the achievement gap.
Thank you, Lori. Oscar, please.
Yes, the achievement gap is an issue to me that is the most pressing civil rights issue in our country because we need to make sure that all children are given an equal opportunity to reach their highest potential. That being said, you know, I'm a father. I have two children. Both of them are current students in our school district, and both of my children participated in our early childhood development programs. One thing that I do support is ensuring that we put all the resources necessary to make sure that those facilities are the best facilities that we can offer our kids. And we need to also make sure that we think about affordability and that we give parents from various different socioeconomic backgrounds the opportunity to attain high-quality early childhood development services. And so that's something that I'll work for and I'll support.
Thank you, Oscar. Ann, please.
Yes, early childhood preschools and early childhood learning is essential to closing that achievement gap. Everybody should be in love with preschools. I'm in love with preschools. We sent our child, who's now in elementary school, to a preschool. The concern in the community, however, is that when you're putting preschools on public elementary school sites, we need to really make sure that it's not going to be eroding the basics of public education, which is to say, "Public education is free for all." And right now, we don't have that opportunity. It is a tuition-based system, and perhaps we could figure out how to make that at least a sliding scale, if not free for all children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. So the district has large budget reserves. Do you think they're excessive or do you believe they're necessary? We've heard for years about a structural deficit, so why aren't some of these dollars being put into the district's operating budget and being used for our kids? Oscar, do you want to lead us off? I'm sorry. Lori, I'm going to let you start us.
While the budget reserves may sound large, in the scheme of things, they're really not. In the event of any kind of disruption in services or in flow of cash, we keep what is basically required to keep the district afloat for a short period of time. We also need to show large reserves in order to get the bond rating that we get, which reduces the amount that people then pay when we pass a bond measure to improve our facilities. The structural deficit is something that we are looking at. We are evaluating the programs we offer in a way that we've never done before. I think the board has committed, along with the superintendent, to a multi-year approach to finally getting that deficit under control. Funding is, as you all know, goes up and down because the state's funding is not flatlined because of what it's based on. And I think, hopefully, Craig will elaborate on that.
But first, we're going to Oscar.
Yes. Having healthy reserves is a state mandate of all school districts. So every school district is required to have a reserve. And it's important, you know, to be fiscally responsible. We need to ensure that we have a reserve. We can't, you know, we have to do the proper planning to ensure that we don't run out of cash. That's not a good thing for any institution, especially public education. So it's important for us to have those reserves. I support that. It's a, I think every chief financial officer that we've worked with always strives to ensure that we have healthy reserves so that we can run our school district efficiently and also responsibly.
Thank you. Ann, please.
Yes. My understanding is that the state requires approximately a 3% reserve, and they're looking at bumping that up to as high as 7% because, of course, districts and schools in all states, and particularly in California, are struggling for funding. We are fortunate in Santa Monica to have all of these different bond measures and property taxes and so forth, and in Malibu, and people who really love our schools and the community, the support is phenomenal. That said, we do have a higher reserve. As Lori mentioned, the bonds are one reason to get those high ratings, and that's great. Should we look at maybe lowering those reserves, perhaps? I think we should, and find a way to spend it on the kids who are there because it's all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, please.
I think we'd all like to believe that the state of California would adequately fund our schools year in and year out, recession, boom, anytime, that we would have enough money to educate the children of California. That's not how it works. As tax dollars go up, we get more money. As tax dollars go down, we get less money. And in the Great Recession, we were fortunate to come in with strong reserves, and we were able to cushion the impact of the draconian cuts that the state had made, and that was huge for us. We still had to make very painful cuts, but nothing like what was around us. On the other hand, as revenues have come back when the recovery has taken place, every year, they have been bigger than we had been told to expect. And so we find ourselves in a situation where we're working against a deficit. We don't think we're going to have enough money, and the reserves have accumulated. I think we're now in a position where we can begin spending down those reserves because the situation has reached a point where those reserves can be brought back into play.
Thank you, Craig. This next question was submitted by a community member seeking clarification. As a candidate for the Board of Education, here's your opportunity to help provide that clarity. So the question is, what is your position on the joint use agreement between our school district and the city of Santa Monica, which gives the city the rights of use to our public school facilities and to lease these facilities and fields to private interests, meaning that students attending that school cannot use that space unless formal requests for space were made in March, actually, of that prior school year? Should the district be giving away our fields and facilities to the city, or should the city be creating its own new open spaces instead of developing our public land? So my question is, we'll start with Oscar.
The joint use agreement was a deal that we created with the city of Santa Monica so that we can access public revenue from the city to fund public education in the city. So that's a very good thing. We share our field space with the city of Santa Monica in order to receive that money. So the trade-off is, I think, a very important one for the students. Over time, I think we realize that, you know, we're landlocked. There's not a lot of space for our young people to play in, to play the various sports. There's a lot of competition to attain that field space. So first, I think we need to be strong advocates for expanding green space in the city of Santa Monica. We need to make sure that all public land that the city currently has, really, a big investment has to go into expanding our public space so that we can meet all the needs of our residents for recreation and so forth.
Thank you, Oscar. Ann, please.
Yes, the joint use agreement between the city of Santa Monica and our school district seems to be a real problem at the moment with the community, and particularly with the parent community, in the sense that our kids don't have the access to their own school sites after school because they can be leased. And when the bell rings at 3 o'clock, it turns over to the city for primary access, of course, as Sandy said, unless it was programmed in at the prior year. The way this was done and handled was not really up to snuff, and that's a problem. We need to be paying attention to public process, but more importantly, we need to make sure that our city is providing for our community and not relying on the school district to provide that open space. So if there's a parks bond, which they tried to run this year, and it ended up being SMS instead, if there's a parks bond in 2020, it may be difficult because we're limited in space, and we have other community issues as well. So I think we need to work on that joint use and perhaps look at undoing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Craig, please.
So the first thing is, of course, we want more park space for our cities. That's great in every way. It helps congestion. It gives kids a place to play, absolutely. In terms of the joint use agreement, the space that's shared is shared with the same kids that attend that school. Our kids are part of the public of this town. The space that's used is space that's typically, space that's not already programmed for school activities, and it's great that the kids and their families can come back and use our facilities. It's actually a terrific example of a city and a school district working together collaboratively to create opportunities and solve problems. But the part that nobody has talked about is the joint use agreement also furnishes the school district with $10 million worth of funds to do things in our schools that we could not otherwise do. I hope it comes up later in the questions, but California funds our schools in the low 40s of national funding.
Thank you. Lori, please.
I don't think I could say it better than Craig just did, but yes, I've lived in Santa Monica for many years, and there's no question that this is a city that is underparked. I would support a parks bond measure hands down, but I'm not sure that enough people would to be able to fund more parks. In the meantime, the city and the district have smartly partnered to serve basically the same people, mostly our kids, and then in some ways, some residents of the city who are older than kids. And one thing that I think is a misconception is that the schools have priority on those fields. Our teams get to practice on those fields after school. It's only after the school uses are finished that others can use the fields. This is a concept that the city and the district developed when the city agreed to give the school district monies that now total $10 million a year from that one contract. It's called a school parks concept, and it's done elsewhere as well successfully.
Thank you. All right. So here's another question from a community member who'd like some clarification, too. We want to be a school district that respects diversity, and we want to feel like we're a part of one school district. But we have PTA, African-American Parents, Students, Staff Group, and the recently established Latino Parent Group, Pima, Santa Monica High School Latino Padres, Estudiantes, and Maestros Asociación, Parents, Students, and Teachers Association. Does this separate or ultimately empower our parent groups to be engaged and work together? Ann, let's lead off with you.
Yes. The different parent groups, I think, are very important for our families because we all have different cultures, different needs. And those are the support groups that will really enable those families and those parents to figure out what it is that they need to do to advocate for their children. I don't believe that at all it is a separation issue, that I think that as those groups form and they're able to expand, there will also be some integration and more feeling of community than less amongst the various groups so that they'll begin to understand each other. And that is a goal of the district with our children as well, with ethnic studies, that this is what we're teaching them. And this is a wonderful opportunity for those families to put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Craig, please.
You know, one of the things about inclusion and diversity is it is not the dominant culture's decision on how that inclusion will take place or how those groups choose to express themselves. It is very much the district's obligation to respect the way in which the community or various communities want to be involved and want to be heard. So I think the variety of different groups, I wish there were more different groups that interacted with the district, because every opportunity we get to interact with people is an enfranchisement of our community. It's an empowering of the community. It teaches the parents and the kids that they do have an opportunity to have their voice heard, and that's an incredibly bigger lesson for the community than simply the voices that we hear. But those voices are incredibly important because without hearing those voices, we may not put our feet down in the right places to move forward to get those parent groups enfranchised in the way we want them to be. So I think this is a terrific development.
Thank you, Craig. Lori, please.
I actually think this is a great question, and it's one that we talked a little bit about at a school board meeting recently when we voted to approve the Pima application. I feel like one of the wonderful things about our district is that we are diverse still and that we do really respect it, appreciate it. And I think that we have to work intentionally to address the underlying question here, which is, how do we empower and help and give the right to anyone who wants to be in a group and who feels, and I do think these groups are empowering? How do we both do that and also come together? Because so much of what we do when we send our kids to schools is we share. How do we help them? How do we support them? How do we help them become civically responsible students who will graduate and be successful in careers or whatever they choose to do?
Thank you, Lori. And Oscar.
Diversity is our strength, and one of the strengths of our public education system is that we have children from all walks of life, all backgrounds, congregating, coming together, learning, sharing, working together. We need to create safe spaces for people to congregate. And you could take at Santa Monica High School, for example, there's various student clubs. When I was student body president at Santa Monica High, the Associated Student Body didn't serve all students. There was Black Student Union, Jewish Student Union, you know, there was various different student groups that all had their space, but we all came together on certain occasions. And I think that's the vision that we need to support. All these different clubs that we have in our city, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, even the Legal Women Voters, I mean, it's important to support variety. It's important to support diversity, but then there has to be an opportunity for us to all come together as one. So we need to figure out a way to do that, but I support the idea of creating safe spaces for people to have their voices heard.
Thank you, Oscar. Okay, so during the next round of questions, each candidate will answer a different question. And candidates, listen carefully because in a later round, you will each be choosing a question from these two rounds to answer. We've provided you with paper and pencils so you can jot down your favorite question. Craig, we'll start off with you. The state of California is committed to producing graduates who are both college and career-ready. In these days of local control and focus on academics and college readiness, what will you do as an elected school board member to make sure that the career-ready aspect is not forgotten?
That's a great question, and that's something that we are talking about and we do not yet do as much as we will be doing in the future. The state has, I want to say, 18 strands of what they recognize as career technical education. We talked as a board two years ago about the plan is that we will pick two or three strands of that that makes sense for our community, in our community, and we will become experts in supplying that to our kids. We have career technical education now. There's terrific programs at both of our high schools that do that, but we really need a clear pathway that supports both college and career readiness, and there are ways to do that that support careers that make sense for our community, careers that make sense for our children, and involve them in the broader community in powerful ways, whether that's motion picture and performing arts or hospitality. There's so many great opportunities for us, and I really look forward to getting on top of that over the next four years.
Thank you. Lori, every election cycle, we hear candidates talking about making sure taxpayers' money is kept close to the classroom. As a decision-maker, elected to the Board of Education, you are making important budget decisions. How would you define "close to the classroom"?
Well, I think generally when people talk about "close to the classroom," they mean related, they mean teacher salaries. They mean things that maintain good teachers, high-quality teaching, professional development for those teachers, program that will be used inside the classroom. I think those are generally the things people mean what they are, I think implicitly saying they don't mean, is they don't want to spend money on more administration, on what people perceive to be things that don't directly touch a student's experience. Administration's a big term, so it encompasses a lot of things. Administration's a big term, so it encompasses a lot of things. But I think, I think that's generally what people are talking about.
Thank you. Oscar, as a school board member, what to do to ensure the safety of staff and students without burdening our overworked educators with additional responsibilities that impact their ability to perform their core function, which is teaching our children?
Yes, correct. There are some misguided leaders in our country that want to give teachers guns. And I think what we need to do is give our teachers a raise. The most important thing that we need to do is support our teachers, because that's really the most important thing in public education is what happens in the classroom. Quality teachers, supporting them, ensuring that they can live with dignity, that they can support to pay the rent here in the city of Santa Monica and take care of their own children, is something that we should hold as a priority in terms of our budget. I think that we also need to be real about the threats that we have in our society. It's really a mental health issue. We need to invest more prevention and intervention, and we need to work in partnership with law enforcement and our social service providers to ensure that we're helping our children out, especially those children that are most vulnerable in our community. But let's be real, there, there are a lot of people out there right now that, that are not stable, and we need to ensure that safety is a priority. And whatever we can do to keep our children safe, that's something that I'll support.
Thank you, Oscar. Anne, what role do you think creativity can play in supporting key priorities of the district, such as reducing the dropout rate, closing the achievement gap, and preparing more students for college eligibility and/or meaningful careers?
Music and the Arts is a wonderful program that we have here in Santa Monica, and sometimes for certain children and perhaps even more than we were aware of. The music and the arts and performing arts offers that child and those children the opportunity to do something that, that inspires them like nothing else. And that's their reason for going to school every day. We are so fortunate in our community to be able to offer this with, with all of the advancements through the ages. We have arts and music programs, and that's the inspiration that can launch a career directly out of high school, offer career scholarships for college, and be an extension to their learning process. So I believe that what we continue to do is integrate the arts into the academics so that it's always available to our children throughout their day.
Thank you. Okay, so again, for this round, each candidate will answer a different question. And candidates, just a reminder that, listen carefully, because in the next round, you will each be choosing a question from this round and the previous round to answer. So Lori, do you agree with the statement that the social justice standards are not one more thing to do, they are part of everything we do?
I, I definitely agree with that statement. We have, for the first time, formalized social justice standards. In my view, there are a number of teachers at varying levels and in varying schools who have really, without calling them social justice standards, have incorporated that into their classrooms and into their teaching for many years. But for the first time, in adopting the social justice standards, our intent is to make that a policy across the district so that all classrooms recognize that it is a part of everything, as you say. And to the extent people need to look at some of their assumptions or some of the ways they've been teaching all along, which may have left certain kids' experiences and heritage out of the, out of what they're, what they're sharing and maybe caused those kids to be less engaged, that's part of what this is about.
Thank you, Lori. Oscar, how do you envision the relationship between the city and the school district in the future? What about this relationship would you like to change and what would you like to continue?
I think the partnership with the, between the city of Santa Monica and the school district is a good one, but it's mostly focused on money. It's about finance. We get money from the city, and it's welcomed. It's something that's needed in a, in a public education system where, in the state of California, we're, we're underfunded. We're 46th in the nation. I mean, that's pitiful that in the, in the, in this great state, that we are 46th in the, in the nation in per pupil spending. So we require a lot of local support, a lot of local funding. But I think what I envision is that, you know, we, we start looking at the various nonprofits that the city funds, and we partner. We hold those nonprofits accountable. We ensure that there is a true partnership, that what we are trying to accomplish in our school district, those nonprofit organizations that the city funds, that they understand what we're attempting to do, that they support our students with after-school programming that really works, that's evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, what, what do you consider the top priorities for our district to tackle? At the end of your services as an elected school board member, what would you be most proud of accomplishing?
Well, one thing that I'd like to accomplish is to bring middle school sports back to our district. We had them a decade or so ago. We've lost them somehow. And I believe that also adds to the equation where we're trying to close that achievement gap and provide kids with those activities after school to, to get them motivated to come to school every day. Another thing that I would like to change would be the way our district looks at privacy issues of the data that is collected through third parties, like all of the platforms that we're offering. Our kids through ed technology needs to be investigated because when sales happen with data sharing and buyouts from bigger corporations, the data goes with it, and we really don't know where it's going. In this day and age where data is the new oil, we need to be cognizant of that fact, and I think that this district should be leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you. So Craig, what priority in terms of funding, training, and access should be given to technology and education? Please share your reasoning.
Yeah, it's a really interesting question because technology is obviously a ubiquitous part of our world and is almost certainly going to be a bigger part of the future. On the other hand, technology doesn't teach children. Technology is only a, a dead piece of material in the process of, of kids' learning. So for me, the teachers are the priority, the living, breathing, inspirational teachers who are creating meaning, who are creating relevance in the study, who are helping kids relate to math or social studies or language. That's the heart of teaching. And to the extent that they can use technology, and I love technology, to the extent they can use that to make it more meaningful and more real or to burrow in and really make a concept, to, to burn it into, to kids' heads so it lasts forever, I'm all in favor of that. But technology is a tool to be used. It is certainly not the be-all and end-all.
Thank you. So now each candidate has the opportunity to answer a question of their choice from the previous two rounds. Any question that you have not already answered? And we're going to go in this order. Oscar.
Yes, there was a question around regarding social justice standards, and, and it's something that, that we, it's a culture shift that we're working towards in our school district and how we implement the social justice standards. As a former student of our school district, there was a time when I would go to school and I'd think about, you know, I'm moving my pencil, but I'm not using my brain, you know? And I think a lot of students lack that student engagement. You know, they, there was, the teacher would give us a lesson plan, give us a test. That was just, that's an old way of, of teaching. It's not the way that students really want to engage and want to learn. I think the future is about project-based learning, or what we call inquiry-based learning, that we, where we take what the young person, their vision for their future, and we, and we give them the tools and we give them experiences that, where they get to experience things in the classroom that they really want to learn about. It's about critical thinking. It's about teaching young people to look at a problem in different ways and to work collaboratively in teams. That's what companies are doing in the high-tech sector, and that's what the future is going to be about.
Thank you, Oscar. Anne, what was your favorite question?
My favorite question was about ed technology and how we support our teachers. I believe that, that our teachers should be using ed technology in a way that doesn't interfere with their particular way of, of teaching and reaching our kids. I don't think that, that technology should be in the forefront of education but used as the tool. And also, it should be used very judiciously. There are certain aspects of technology, as we get into higher learning, where it, it can have a greater role. But I'm finding that it's really necessary because the teachers are hearing from the parents on a regular basis that I can't keep up with this, and they really don't want to. So they, they want to see their kids learning from the teacher, and that role of the teacher is very important. We don't want technology to be edging away at the, at what public education is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, your favorite question?
Yeah, my favorite question is about social justice. One of the things that I have talked and talked and talked about for years and worked very hard to implement at this district is to make our campuses emotionally safe places for our kids, places that are free of bullying, places where kids learn to see themselves in every one of their peers, places where the adults see things that might have been historically something to be punished, to be treated in a way to show the child how they've harmed the fabric of themselves and their society, and to help them to learn to restore the harm to that fabric in a way that enriches them and enriches everybody rather than sending a kid home so that in addition to being in trouble, they're now three days or five days further behind on their homework. So to create a safe space for every child who may not be safe anywhere else in the world to come to school and feel safe in learning and sharing their truth and taking in the truths of others is a huge step for me in making this world a better place.
Thank you, Craig. Lori?
Rather than take a question that people have already chosen, I'll take the one about the relationship between the city and the school district. And I guess I'd like to say that I think that in the time that I've been on the board, the relationship between the city and the district has gotten better and better. But we have a ways to go, and I think not only should that relationship improve, we should incorporate into that relationship, and we are, Santa Monica College, the nonprofits who serve youth in this community, as Oscar mentioned, and the business community. With respect to career technical education, if we don't tap into the business community to have them help us with internships, we are missing the boat. We, we do have a, an existing group called Cradle to Career that, where the city, the district, the college, and some of the nonprofits do come together. We need to make that work even better for our goals, and a lot of that is about the school district making clear what it needs.
Thank you. Okay, so the next two questions will be answered by all four candidates. All of you have identified school safety as a priority issue. Recently, U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos made it clear that she believes school districts have the flexibility to arm teachers using federal funds provided under the Every Student Succeeds Act. However, she also said that the department has no plans to issue guidance on the topic. The President of the United States has said arming teachers or other staff would make schools safer. So your question is, if California law allowed for teachers or other staff to carry weapons on campus, would you consider it a viable security option for our schools? Anne, what do you think?
Absolutely not. I would not want a gun in my home. I wouldn't feel comfortable around it. My understanding is that you need to have a real active role even to be able to use a gun, like our, our police officers. Our teachers are there to teach. I hand my child over to my teacher, his teacher, every day. I don't want her to be responsible for a gun that she or he might never want to use. I don't think that teachers should have to use guns. That's a ridiculous notion, and someone who put it there has a ridiculous notion of what public education is.
Thank you, Anne. Craig?
Guns on campus aren't the solution. We are actively working as part of the planning for the bond on the November 6 ballot, SMS, which I hope everybody who's watching this will vote yes on. Part of the planning for that is planning for enhanced perimeter security for our campuses. So putting in new fences that are unclimbable, that are not restrictive on the inside, don't make our kids feel like they're in prison with perimeter security systems so we can control who comes and goes, with doors that lock and buzz in with ID systems so that we know who's on our campuses. That is an important step. Controlling access to our campuses is an important step. The only thing that's more important to the school district than making sure every child is ready for college and career is making sure children are physically safe. The right way to do that is to enhance the physical security of that campus and control that access. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that their guns are controlled so that we don't have crazy people running around trying to get onto campuses to kill children.
Thank you, Craig. Lori?
I completely agree with Anne and Craig on this. And so I would add to that, that I think the real answer lies in part in gun control, not the proliferation of guns onto school campuses or anywhere else. I think we, we need to, we need our parents and the rest of our community to know that we take the issue of security seriously. But this is not an option that I think would go down well in this community, and I, I personally wouldn't support it. I think the other thing we need to do is, in our schools, we need to make more serious efforts and sink resources into mental health counseling and into socio, social-emotional growth and well-being. I think that's in fact an area we might partner with the city in, who's done a lot of work in well-being in our community, to go back to the previous question. But I, I do not see guns as a viable option, and I don't really see that that would pass the California legislature either, fortunately.
Thank you. Oscar?
I'll say it again. The most important thing to give our teachers is a raise, not a gun. So we need to focus on what we can do to support teachers in the classroom and not give them an added burden of being a security guard. They didn't go to get a master's degree and bachelor's degrees and the training that they received to be carrying guns on campus. What we do need to do is arm our students with a supportive and caring learning environment. We need to arm our staff with the training to teach conflict resolution and to assess mental health issues when they surface. So if we can, if we can find, find, we can see when young people are starting to struggle, mental health issues start surfacing around teenage years, we need to, we need to find a way to intervene in that child's life, give the support that they need. Growing up in the Pico neighborhood, unfortunately, I, I got to witness a lot of violence. There were 63 homicides since 1982 that have occurred in my community. So I understand the, the trauma that gun violence causes, and I don't want to see any guns on our campus.
Thank you. So now we're here at our final question. Measure SMS has been put on the Santa Monica ballot by the school board. It asks, should the Santa Monica School Facilities Improvement District be authorized to issue up to $485 million in general obligation bonds to improve, repair, construct, and modernize school facilities? Do you support Measure SMS? Yes? No? Why? So Craig, how do you feel?
As I already said, I am completely in support of SMS. It is critical for our school district. We have buildings that date back to the WPA projects of the 1930s. Many, many of our schools date back to mid-century. We've had a strategic plan in place since 2006 and probably before to rebuild Santa Monica High School, and this will be the third phase of moving forward with that very, very large project. We also have campus security that we just talked about, getting those fences in, getting the cameras in, getting the controlled access in is a super important part of keeping our kids safe. We've talked in this community for three years about the issues of, of hotter temperatures and too hot classrooms. Getting air conditioning in is terribly important. Continuing to do repairs and renovations of spaces to make them usable going forward is critically important. So SMS is an absolutely must-have.
Thank you. Anne?
I do support Measure SMS. I do have some reservations with it as well. One, I'm concerned about our low-income families, particularly our seniors who are still living in apartments that are under original rent control. And although the Rent Control Board did a wonderful thing by capping the pass-through... And although the Rent Control Board did a wonderful thing by capping the pass-through bonds, if their building is Ellis at this point in time and is sold for a much higher rate, those pass-throughs will come through with a cap, but that cap could be a lot of money for a low-income senior or even a family if they're still in original rent control. And the other issue is that I wish we would have had a facilities master plan in place before we issued the bond because I don't want it to bust community over this issue, and I don't want community to be fighting over how this money gets spent.
Thank you. Oscar?
I support SMS. I think that our facilities are very old. I attended Will Rogers, John Adams, and Santa Monica High School, and I can say that those facilities are very dated. The bathrooms didn't work. At recess, we would go after playing handball or kickball and try to get a drink of water, and the water fountain didn't work. So there are serious needs in our facilities. We need to improve our facilities. Fortunately, my children attend Edison Language Academy. It's the first school that got totally rebuilt in the city of Santa Monica, and I can tell you it makes a big difference, the way the teachers feel, the administrators, the parents, and most importantly, the students. They have great learning environments, but even with that, we had to add air conditioning, and so there's still some improvements that need to be made even on the new campus. So I totally support this, but we also do have to be concerned about the impact that it has on our low-income residents. The cost is something that is tough for them to bear as well.
Thank you. Lori, please.
I don't want to be too redundant, but I do support this. It's the only way we're ever going to make Sam Ojai what it should be in support of what those great teachers do in the classroom. It's over, most of the campus is over 100 years old. As Craig mentioned, we're only going to be building Phase 3 with the passage of this bond measure, and I think that the campus plan has, I believe, seven phases, might even be nine. So there's really a huge amount to do. The security issues, the heat and ventilation issues, the air conditioning issues, which have been raised by teachers now for years, those will all be addressed by this bond measure. I do think that the Rent Control Board cap will help immensely, and with all due respect, I don't think the Ellis Act, which is a different problem, is relevant to this issue. I think the needs have been identified much more clearly than people realize, and I don't have time to go into that.
Thank you. So the time for questions has expired. It's now time for closing statements. Each candidate has 60 seconds to close. During this time, you may also comment, rebut, augment, or clarify any topic that was raised during the forum. So Oscar, we're going to lead off with you.
I'm running for reelection to the school board because I believe that a quality public education is the most effective tool to reconcile social and economic inequality. I am a proud product of this school district. I've served on the school board for 16 years. I have governance experience at a time where our students need it. I'm a founder of a youth center. When we had the problem of gang violence in our city, I responded to that with leadership, and we have fortunately decreased gang violence in the city of Santa Monica. I have two children that attend our public schools. As a father, active in their lives, I understand the importance of a quality public education, and I want to give that opportunity to the future and the students both in the city of Santa Monica and Malibu. My commitment to the youth of this city and all the students in Santa Monica and Malibu is personal and sincere, and I hope to count on your vote. I've been endorsed by the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, our teachers, our classified staff, and Santa Monique's for Renters' Rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I've played a leadership role in promoting policies that are all about excellence and equity in our schools. And to go back to the top priorities question, which I didn't get to answer, I think if I were to leave the school board in four more years, I would like to really feel that we had stuck to our priority about working to close the achievement and opportunity gap, and I would be most proud to have made a serious dent in that problem. We are looking at, we are using many tools to try to address that problem. Some of them have been talked about tonight: preschools, family engagement, more engaging curriculum, culturally relevant curriculum and pedagogy, project-based or interest-based learning, something we haven't talked about. I think a counseling program that really addresses students' needs better than it currently does, identifying at-risk children and building relationships with all students.
Thank you, Lori. Anne?
I'm a 19-year resident of Santa Monica, and I am a mother of a child in our public schools. I would be the only mother on the school board with a child currently enrolled in the schools, and I feel that that is an important part of the community because I'm constantly in this community and understand and aware what parents are concerned about. One of the things that I want to talk about is we're moving into the 21st century learning with all of the changes in our schools, which we certainly need, but we also need to change in the way that we look at our student and family privacy with the different applications and the softwares that are involved in that. And I also wanted to talk about the joint use, so I want to change that. I want to bring that into the 21st century with the data and securing that. And then I also want to talk that the joint use, we agreed as taxpayers to tax ourselves, and I want to just say that those taxes were asked back from us.
Thank you. Craig?
I'm a teacher. I'm a father of a 10th grader who's been in the Santa Monica-Malibu school district her entire schooling life. My top issues are making sure that every child in this district is college and career-ready, that they've received an inspiring education that makes them better human beings, better citizens, and creates an open, opportune future for them, that they pass through here in safe campuses, both physically and emotionally. We've worked very hard on the school board to put in place coherent programs that need to be supported over the next four years by the same group of people who put them in place. I'm running with the endorsement of my three fellow incumbents. I'm running with the endorsement of the mayor of Santa Monica, Ted Winterer, the mayor pro tem, Gleem Davis, with the support of Santa Monica's for Renters' Rights, Community for Excellent Public Schools, every incumbent from the college board who we work with closely. We have a great team in place. We have a huge opportunity here with our schools, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Craig. Well, at this time, we'd like to thank our candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters Santa Monica Education Fund, we want to thank all of you for taking part in this candidate's forum and for stepping forward to run for office. This forum will be replayed multiple times on Santa Monica City TV Channel 16 and on cable channel 99, which is airing election programming 24/7 until Election Day. All forums are also available on demand at smvote.org. For more information on both local and state elections, check out Voters Edge at votersedge.org. We also want to thank you, our home audience, for your interest. It takes all of us to make democracy work. Remember, cast your vote-by-mail ballots or go to the polls and vote on November 6. Elections are won by those who vote. Thank you.